I'd like to give this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Good evening, I thank everyone for coming tonight for the June 5th, 2025 Springfield Municipal Regional Planning Commission meeting. Item 1.2, Ms. Marleau, if you'll call the roll.
Baggot?
Here.
Bibb?
Here.
Boyd?
Here.
Briggs?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
Moreland?
Here.
Shot?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Townsend?
Here.
All are present, I have a quorum.
Item 1.3, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of the planning commission held on May 1st, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Passes. Item 1.4, public comment period, do you have anybody? Item 1.5, public hearing. Amendments to the City of Springfield's zoning ordinance by amending section 11-808 entitled "Sign Regulations" for the City of Springfield. Do you have anybody registered to speak? This time we'll close the public hearing. Item 2.0, old business. 2.1, discuss and possibly take action on Blackwood Farms' preliminary plat. Ms. Durham?
Good evening, Commissioners. Before you is a request for approval of the preliminary plat for Blackwood Farms. This request was deferred at last month's meeting to allow the commission additional time to review the traffic improvement study that was completed with the annexation and zoning in 2022. As you likely recall, this subdivision fronts both the north and south sides of Blackwood Drive. The second of the two traffic impact studies that was completed recommended improvements at the intersection of Blackwood Drive and Memorial Boulevard. Since this plan was last before you, there have been no changes to the preliminary plat except for the addition of a note that states, and this note is on the bottom of the plat, kind of centered in the middle, it states, "Based on findings in the building," sorry, excuse me, "based on findings in the traffic impact study prepared by Fishbach Transportation Group dated January 2022, no more than 310 building permits will be issued for Blackwood Farms' community until all identified intersection improvements at Blackwood Drive and Memorial Boulevard have been permitted, constructed, and are fully operational." Essentially, we ask that that note be added to reflect the findings of that traffic study. Additionally, since last month's meeting, staff has approved an updated HOA document that was provided by Lennar Homes. That document was shared with the commission in your agenda packet for tonight's meeting. So, other than those two additions, there's been no changes to the plan. We have folks with engineering and surveying and their development team here tonight if you have any specific questions about the project that you would like to ask of those representatives. Or any of our staff as well.
Does anybody on the commission have any questions for the engineering team or the city staff?
You did say that there would be Memorial Drive and that before it's completed.
The way the traffic study, there were two traffic studies done originally, one, I don't recall honestly if it was the north and then the south, or the south and then the north, but there were two. The second one that was completed identified improvements that would be needed on Blackwood, turning onto Memorial. So what we did is we asked that they limit the number of homes until all of those were there to reflect the number of homes that didn't need that, essentially. When the first traffic study was done, no improvements were required. When they added on those additional homes, that's when the traffic improvements were identified as being necessary to support the development. Does that make sense? Why we added that? Okay.
Ms. Marleau?
So first, I just wanted to make a comment that I was really grateful to everybody who took the time to explain to me some of my questions from last, from last month. I've really appreciated learning so much about everything that goes into this, and it sounds like a lot of my questions were addressed. So, thank you for that, and I feel a lot more comfortable about making a decision about it. That being said, I feel that we just need to make sure it's on record that, not for this project per se, but just in general, in relationship to the growth plan we have for our community, that this project is in a strategic location because of its proximity to Travis Price and where we see the community growing that way. As we bring more people in, we're definitely going to see growth in that area, as I'd spoken to Terry about, and I know that it's not this project's responsibility to, a lot for that growth, but it should definitely be front and center in, in how the city plans, how we're going to take care of that and do that responsibly, because it's such an exciting time. There's thousands of homes coming in, potentially thousands of families who can use that space, and as we know, it's become part of our identity, right? Last time, a lot of people said, "Well, what about the, the fair? The fair that comes every year is right there. What about Winter Wonderland, which, which brought, what, 40,000, 40,000 cars into that area?" So, these are just things that I feel in my heart as a, as a loyal, committed resident that I would need to make sure is, is brought forward, because we are excited for change. Thank you.
I'll just quickly make a comment. Appreciate the additional info, because I think it came up at the last meeting. So, thank you all for being patient and letting us review everything to make a good decision.
Did you say that it was going to be a reduction in the houses that we're going to put in there?
No, this preliminary plat shows the same number of homes. There's been no actual changes to the conceptual layout. So the homes are the same, the road network is the same.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I was, I was, obviously, last meeting, I was a little concerned, so I took a few minutes of stuff in my mind. Get a little traffic study, just curiosity numbers, events and stuff that happened through the year. I just wanted y'all to look at that if you had a minute. I appreciate, you know, taking the time to, look, if you got any questions, I'll try to answer them best I can, so. It's pretty well set explanatory. This was all done on one day in a six-hour period. You see the amount of vehicles on the six-hour period. This, like you say, it states here, this is counting vehicles that are going both directions. We've said at the, at the big gate at the Rock County Fairgrounds, and discounted cars going both ways. Only concern, or the big concern was, was when school, obviously, you could tell when school let out and, and when the ballgames were going on, because traffic backed all the way up to the, to the big gate there at the fairgrounds on Blackwood, so.
Did the improvements to the intersection at Blackwood and Memorial, was, was there any conversation in that study, I apologize for not remembering, with any signalization required as part of the improvements? Flashing the light or anything?
Mr. Lyon, if you want to come to the microphone.
No, Bob, it was, it was only a dedicated left or right turn lane, one or the other is all that was required, and a certain amount of storage there sitting at the end of Blackwood onto Memorial, but no signalization was required.
So, it would probably be a left-hand only turn lane?
That, or add a right turn to dedicate the current one as a left turn, yes, one way or the other.
The first study was done when the south side was originally annexed and zoned, and that was up to 310 lots, and then when they came back and annexed and zoned the north side, that's when the second traffic study was done, and it was added to what she had previously studied with the south side, so she added all that volume act in there, and that's when she basically stated, above the 310 from transition from one study to the next, that's when the requirement of the turn of lane came into place. So, 310 and less, there was no requirement based on her study and traffic flow. So that's reflected on the plats, reflected on the construction plans.
And what's the total number of single-family homes?
Three, three ninety-one.
Yeah, 391, and I believe 90 townhomes.
90 townhomes.
Yeah, the study was originally done for, I think, 510 total, the second study was. So we're less than the second.
Two-thirds, two-thirds of building permits could be left before any road improvement.
Yes, up to 310.
And I'm, I'm all for the development, I really, I really am, and I think I voted no last time when we deferred it. The, my only comment would be, this is an ideal example of what performance-based zoning could alleviate in, in the future. When you look at what happens to, protects the community for having to go out in the future and spend money that could have been taken care of through a zoning ordinance in the beginning, a performance-based, based upon what is required, address the road, things like that. I think it's, it's just a, it's not a pet peeve of mine, but it's a wish that I think every community that's growing should look at as a possibility of what type of zoning ordinance they should consider at some point in time.
And I, I can't speak to this to great detail, but I know that when each lot is permitted, you know, they'll have to pay that, the new fee that was established, what, two years ago now, 18 months ago? So that should be divvied up among the different apartments for help with improvements and maintenance, because of this, you know, impact.
And when those, are they, are those lots, when that fee is done, is it dedicated or earmarked for that development? Or is it going to, does it go into a city pool for, talking about system development System development charges for a single-family home is $9,968, for a multifamily, it's 7764, I think. So there's a, a non-res, a non-utility component and a utility component. So, for residential purposes, they go into categories, escrow accounts, specific for the things, so parks.
But it's not site-specific?
No, it's for future project-specific. So, when the city overall does an improvement project, or builds a new road, or builds a new building, or buys new police equipment, or fire equipment, or builds a new park, or buys new park equipment, that's when those funds are used. And then for water and wastewater, new water lines or new sewer lines the city builds, or new improvements at the water plant and the wastewater plant. So, it's first in, first out, we spend it almost as quick as we get it.
David, maybe you could speak a little more to what you and I had, what you taught me yesterday, just about how, again, I like to say, in my non-engineering understanding, in my layman's understanding of this project and what was recommended with the traffic study, it seems that the, the way that the plat is designed meets the requirements that we have, and maybe speaking to what Bob said about, in the future, you know, ordinances or what, what we need to have in place to, to, I guess the bottom line is, we're concerned about turning lanes, right, and traffic in that area, which obviously, right now, is not required based on what the guidelines and what, what the laws say. So, why is that? Can you just talk a little bit more on that?
Well, okay, in a nutshell, for you to ask for specific improvements for transportation, their impact study has to support that request. So, in this particular case, it supports it towards the end, down at the end at Memorial, where they'll have to put in a turn-in line for left-hand turns on Black Patch. Black, thank you, Blackwood, and so, that's what the traffic study says and recommends. You know, we have these outliers there at the fairgrounds and at the park, so the traffic study procedure does not take into account those outliers. It takes into account average daily traffic as counted and projected. So, you know, each one of those houses has an average daily trip generation of 10, the multifamily, the townhomes has one of seven, so, and that road, there's going to be a roundabout, but that road right now, if you don't purposefully drive the speed limit, the road will let you go faster than the speed limit. You, you're, there, most people that travel up and down Blackwood, travel faster than 30 miles an hour. Over time, as traffic joins and gets on the roadway, it automatically regulates the speed. So more traffic regulates speeds to slower amounts and not, and usually lower traffic incidences as well. So, we, you know, it'll self-regulate itself down. If and when there is a need for a turn-in lane or an additional lane on that road, you know, it will be brought, the, the city will know, and those funds, not those specific funds, but system development fees, charges, will, will and can be used for that roadway About what we covered yesterday?
Yeah.
So I, what I, what I'm looking at is the context of kind of how we got here, and so, you know, 2022, it was rezoned, or zoned to city zoning and annexed, so that, that pulls in certain property rights that they have. So I think, you know, in complying with state law, like looking at the fact that they've submitted a plat that meets the zoning, like I don't think we have a whole lot we can push back on, and they've addressed the, the traffic impacts through that. I think there is this concern on the special events that definitely the city has, that contributes to the overall issue. So, like I would be inclined to go ahead and have this move forward, that maybe, and that we've been talking about topics to address at work sessions, that we maybe explore how infrastructure is done in the city and how maybe there's some other tools that as new developments come in before us, we're able to, to leverage more of, of that opportunity when those, those come, come about. I think in this instance, we're, we're hemmed in, and the fact that they've already got the zoning, it's annexed, the traffic study has been completed, signed off by an engineer, and, and some of these other issues related to the event, I think, have to be addressed through operational issues with parks, police, other folks.
So, to address multitude of things here, if as a planning commission, you think that the city needs to look at and modernize the zoning ordinance, you as a planning commission need to set up some work sessions, we can find some working examples of some performance-based and form-based zoning ordinances, and you guys can decide what you think needs to be recommended to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, and we can set that up in a, in an ordinance and move forward. Now, you know, a full-blown change for a zoning ordinance, it's going to take a little time, but, you know, it may be the time that we need to start addressing some of these issues, because the one that we have has been amended many, many times, and we're going to talk about amending it again tonight. So that's the great thing about zoning ordinances, they, they are a changing document reflecting the planning commission, the Board of Mayor and Alderman, and the citizens at different times, and, and so, but we'd be glad to sit down and have workshops and, and listening sessions with you and even the citizens of the city of Springfield, so that we can get it right.
I mean, I feel like there's appetite there, and so I think, you know, if we can follow up on that, I think would be great, because the comprehensive plan was adopted about a year ago, maybe a little less, and so maybe reviewing the zoning ordinance and how it kind of helps deliver on that vision would be a good next step.
All right, but any further questions for anyone on item 2.1?
I have one question. During the traffic study, was it, did you guys consider maybe reducing the speed on the section of Memorial, like a couple miles, maybe?
I don't know that they, I, I feel confident that they did not reduce the speed out past Blackwood in that traffic study, because it was, I'm, you know, believe it or not, 4,000 additional daily trips on Memorial with four lanes and a turn-in lane isn't going to impact it that much. It'll impact traffic, you know, twice a day, maybe a third time on your average day, you know, in the morning when, when you're going to work, the kids are going to school, in the evening, when you're coming back and the kids are coming home, and depending, you know, if, if that community is a bedroom community to Nashville, there's not even going to be a, a real spike at lunch.
You're saying it's not going to affect Blackwood? I know you're saying, what you're saying on 41, but.
Forty-one, no, I said 41.
Right, Black, but you're not saying anything about Blackwood?
Well, yes, it's going to affect Blackwood, but Blackwood is a road that's designed already to handle 50 mile-an-hour roads, even though it's a 30 mile-an-hour posted speed limit. As traffic adds on to Blackwood, Blackwood will self-regulate speed-wise. Yes, that road is capable of handling that much more traffic. We're not talking.
I'm not saying the road is not capable of handling that much traffic. My problem is getting in and out down there. That's going to be the problem.
Well, it, it will not be as big a problem as you think. A 30-second to a minute and a half delay is not an unreasonable way at peak times. And if, and if the state of Tennessee, if we petition the state of Tennessee and they say there are warrants at the intersection of Blackwood and Memorial, they will allow a, a traffic signal to go in, but there, right now, according to state regulations, the municipal, the traffic control manual, there's not enough warrants, there's not enough traffic coming off of, if you dumped it all onto Memorial to justify a traffic signal. I think the biggest thing would be, if it was a one-way-in, one-way-out situation, that would be one thing. You've got a thoroughfare that goes all the way through. You've got a ton of people coming from the north that are wanting to go to 49, I mean 76, and they use it as a cut-thru. Well, if I know I'm going to be sitting.
Huge amount of dump trucks. I'd be surprised to have any dump trucks, and I mean, they're, you know.
They still go in both directions. If I know I'm going to be sitting in line waiting to get out at a no-signal intersection, then I'm going to pick the one of least resistance, and I'm going to go whichever way it requires me to go. And if I see a bunch of cars coming in, then I'm going to go around to the signal side and go up Fifth Avenue and come around that way. I mean, there are options to be used. It's not the ideal situation, but like Michael said, we've put ourselves in this position already, and we have no recourse at this particular point in time.
So that means that, do we have a motion for approval?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Marleau?
Briggs?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Shot?
Yes.
Baggot?
Is.
Townsend?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Moreland?
Yes.
Passes with nine.
3.0, new business. Item 3.1, discuss and possibly take action on amendments to the City of Springfield's zoning ordinance by amending section 11-808 entitled "Sign Regulations" for the City of Springfield. Ms. Durham?
What you have before you with this agenda item is a request to approve an amendment to the zoning ordinance that would revise just a portion of the sign regulations specifically to how high signs can be mounted on buildings. We've run into a lot of situations lately where, in the past, it was presumed it was just roofline. Well, it turns out the code actually says 20 feet. No sign is supposed to be mounted on a building greater than 20 feet. So we'd been presented with multiple requests for variances, so I said, "Let's just look and see what the code says, let's look and see what other cities are doing." Before you is a list of all the cities I looked at. Every single one of those cities said roofline. So, I thought that it made sense to go ahead and just strike all of the words after, it currently says, "The top of all wall and marquees signs shall be below the roofline and at a height no greater than 20 feet above the ground," just striking everything off of, after roofline and letting them be just below the roofline of buildings. It makes sense. Some buildings we've found are architecturally designed to allow wall monument, or I'm sorry, wall signage in certain locations, which is where these variances have kind of been presented. So, it's just a request for you recommending approval of that change.
Any questions for Ms. Durham on this ordinance change?
In commercial developments where you have a strip center that maybe have six or eight different entities like that, is there regulations that require the signs to be semestrical?
No, there's not.
Should there be?
I mean, no.
At, I mean, roofline can be anywhere, they can put it wherever they want, from 10 feet off the ground up to the top. It would look kind of silly, depending upon the size of the sign, but they can only go a maximum square foot.
I mean, that is, that is certainly something we can consider looking at if this board would like us to. Some of those things are often regulated by the developer of those projects as well, though they sometimes put limitations in place regarding signage internally, but we can look at that, regulating that, per se, if one was already there, that everybody else is consistent.
I don't know if you need to go that far. I mean, you need to have some leeway at, at the planning, at the city level, staff level, to be able to say, "Hey, you know, let's, let's try to make this," because some, some, if it's not all the same company, maybe they own their individual space, somebody's going to want theirs up here just as high as they can get, because they're going to get the visibility. The other ones may not care.
Well, they are limited to the square footage, though. That is regulated. And I will say, I went out and looked at the new signage that was installed at Walmart because they requested an inspection, and theirs is all over the place, too. It is in different levels throughout the walls of the building, so, but we can look at it if that is something the board would like, or the commission would like us to look at.
That's a single entity. That's, I mean, if they're not competing with anybody else, others may not say anything. Anyway, no, that's fine.
Do we have a motion for approval?
Some of them.
And a second.
Second.
Moreland?
Yes.
Bibb?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Shot?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Passes with nine.
Item 4.0, Community Development Director's Report. Ms. Durham?
Okay, a couple of things tonight. Ironically, I have a whole slide on proposed zoning ordinance changes, things that we're looking at in our office. First, though, we have two small preliminary plaques that have come before us that I would like to get permission from this board, that we can do staff approval. If you would like us to bring these back before you for your review and approval, I'm happy to do so, but both of these are three lots, I believe. The one on the left is the right-of-way abandonment that was recently approved for New Hope Lane. When they did the right-of-way abandonment, now they have to uncombine all of the lots there and turn it back into one lot. And then the one on the right is some property that is near legacy, it's on Oakland Farms, it's a number of lots that were never built on, and they've subdivided to make them a little bit smaller. bit smaller. We've been reviewing it internally because there are some drainage issues, but we have not yet approved that final plat, so.
The first one, that's the Gupta property, correct? That was?
No, that's the Excel Industries.
Okay. That was a bunch of lots. It was three separate?
The one on the left?
Yes.
The property on the north currently has a building on it now. We brought it back before the commission a couple months ago to have that section of New Hope Lane abandoned. And they're, they're working through engineering documents right now to permit a second building on the bottom half of the property.
Okay.
And working through all the documents to officially abandon that portion of the road. Again, if the board wants to see these in detail, they can be presented because they're more than three lots. But there wasn't anything significant on either of these that I figured it was worth asking for staff approval. But whatever you want to do is fine.
Does anyone have a problem with the staff approving this? Do you need a motion?
No.
Does it have to have a motion?
Just in general, are we good with it?
Yeah.
Good with staff.
Okay. Moving on. A list, and we'll go over these some more. When we look at the development tracker at the end, I want to make sure everybody's comfortable with the development tracker on your iPad. Before you is just kind of a list of some of the bigger projects that are under review still. Blackwood Farms, we're really close on getting all of the civvles approved and ready to kind of issue permits on. I think we're only down to a few landscaping issues. Springview Village, that's a big project that's coming back. It will be presented to the board next month. You will see before you a final master development plan that was previously approved. They, the time expired, and so we're having to come back through for that approval. At the same time, they are submitting a preliminary plat and civil drawings for, I believe it's somewhere around 92 single-family lots. So there's actually three different portions that are coming back. That's a project. It will have a total of 550-ish residential units off of Batson Parkway and Old Highway 431.
That's the former Kumar property, correct?
Yes, that is that property. So you will see that in detail next month. Couple of mixed-use ones that are the same. They've just been kicked back to engineers with review comments by city staff. Commercial, the only thing new on there is Veterans Restoration, which is over off of Bradley Drive. It's a 5,000-square-foot industrial building. Excel Industries, we've already talked about. And then Pan Commercial is a 6,000-square-foot building. I think we did talk about this one briefly last month at the corner of Brent Lawn and Memorial. That one is back to the engineer for additional review. And then since last month, we have moved Jasper Fields to construction. That one is at Fifth and Stevenson. You've probably seen the construction going on. That's 130 homes. They are approved to do all onsite construction. They're limited to building permits on that one as well because of traffic improvements that need to be in place before they can complete the subdivision.
Excuse me, Karen?
Yes, ma'am?
That's not in our agenda packet, right?
No, this is not. No, these are all ones that are on the development tracker.
Development tracker.
Highland Reserve. Most of these ones that are under construction, you've seen all of these, but if you have any questions about any of them, we can look at them with the development tracker, so. But really, the only big thing that has been approved is Jasper Fields. Okay, some of the different things that we are looking at in my office, there are definitely revisions and amendments to the zoning ordinance that we know need to be done. As Mr. Brewer said, it's time-consuming to do this. So looking through it, amending it. I will add, looking at performance-based zoning into my list of things. The signage regulations, we've already talked about some of them. We're still looking at the square footage allowed on monument signage versus pole signage. Multiple developers have come wanting to do more monument signage. However, the size limitations are pushing them to do pole signs. But it's starting to be a problem with the electric department as well, where they would prefer to not have so many pole signs. So we're looking at that. We've had several meetings about updating the landscaping requirements, making sure all of the verbiage is just legal. I mean, it's all legal now, but kind of updating it and making sure it's exactly where we need it to be so that it can be enforced. And then also kind of making the residential component a little more stringent. We're not really in compliance with what other cities do in the sense that we currently require one tree per lot. And a lot of other cities require, for residential developments, kind of a per-acre requirement or inches per acre. There's a lot of different ways that it's looked at. We are definitely not as restrictive to a developer as we could be, but there's probably a way we could make that a little more green for us. District additions, development of a multifamily district. The comp plan that was approved last year recommended adding another zoning classification that specifically spoke to multifamily developments, because we currently don't have one. And then one for mixed-use developments as well. So in addition to just looking at the ordinance as a whole and recognizing there's some clarification, there's some modernization that needs to be done, we have opportunity to add more visuals and more tables and diagrams to just kind of make it easier and more user-friendly. We have some work to do with adding some categories that would be useful, depending on the type of development you're doing. Any questions about any of that? I know that's a lot. We have training. We need to get everybody caught up on state-required professional development. We have to do four hours. So my question to you is, do we do it all at one time?
No.
Okay. You think so? Do we break it up into two, three, four sessions? Do you want to do a component online and a component in person? There is an opportunity to do that as well. So I just, you don't have to tell me today, but I want you thinking about that and maybe send to me an email, let me know what your thoughts are, because we have to get the four hours done. With that being said, I provided you a list labeled A through E of all of the different areas. It's in the, I did not have this in your agenda packet. I just had this created. I was trying to do it in a digital form document, and then I realized not everybody loves when I do things digitally, so I said, I'll go old-school and I'll do paper. But it has five areas that planning commissioners generally would get training in, that I wanted you all to have available to kind of decide, hey, where do we want training? What is going to serve you as a commissioner? Where do you want to know more info, or what do you want to know more information about? So I would like it, you don't have to do this again today either, take it with you, get back to me, just look at it and tell me which one is most important, least important, that sort of thing. But we do have to get this training done sooner rather than later.
What's the timeline on the training?
I honestly do not recall-
It's by the end of the year.
Okay. I don't recall when this commission did their training last, but I know each calendar year, every commissioner is required to have-
It's 54 hours.
And then that's it for my presentation. If anybody wants to go over the development tracker, I put a QR code up that you can access it from your iPad. You know how to use it, you don't-
The things you're not talking about have been correct.
They have, yes. Although I will say, I do know there are several developments on there. And like I said in my emails, this is going to be an ongoing thing that we need to update regularly, because things move from construction to completion or from approved to construction. And so it's just a matter of getting those updates made, but we do have a system in place for it. It takes a little bit of time to get done.
Do you want to adjourn?
Yes, absolutely.
And then anyone that needs to, wants any help with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I got one question.
Yeah, absolutely.
Of course, I'm new on this board, so I, what, what's the purpose, I guess, of this board if, when we come in and the city, each department is okayed or told us that this is great, what's the purpose of us if, I mean, it's a done deal, basically, in my opinion? I mean, what's the purpose of us?
It would depend on where a project, it would depend on where a project is. If a project is coming in at the zoning stage, that's when you have more opportunity to kind of say, these are the things we would like to see. It's when it's already been zoned and there's stipulations put in place with those zonings that, you're right, you're somewhat limited at that point.
Right.
Because it's required by law for one.
I understand that part of it, but it's kind of like, what, I mean, we're just here to say yes.
I will say that-
At a point, yes. Yes.
I will say that Bob helped out a couple of times when some streets were very narrow and we added some sidewalks to both sides of the streets and some things like that that weren't originally in their plan, that we were able to direct them to do before it was approved. And I think that's the biggest part of this, this commission is to make sure things are good for the future of that development.
You get to the point where, and you know, this is one of the things the planning commissioners have to be extremely careful of, and I've said this before and I'll say it all the time because it's part of the, it's law. You don't want to have to go in front of a judge in order for him to tell you, you were wrong.
I understand, I understand.
But there is a point in time where the planning commission has a very vital part of the planning process. But once that planning process is in effect and in place, then, yeah, our hands are going to be pretty well tied and you can't deny something just because you don't like it. You can, but if there's enough people on the planning commission that vote that way, then, yeah, you're going to go in front of a judge more than likely, because whoever got denied is going to come back and say, you know, we met all the requirements and had all the things in place that we were requested to do based on the zone ordinance, based on the subdivision regulations, and based on what we were told by the individual departments, which we have to rely on their expertise because we don't know. I'm not an engineer, I'm not a mechanical, I'm not a civil, I'm not any type of engineer that would know the difference. I know what I would like to see. And whatever we don't like on this particular development should weigh heavily on what you would want to see coming at the next development. Because anything that comes in now-
But you get what I'm saying. It's already, it's already done deal, basically, before it comes to us, most of the time.
Well, not necessarily, not necessarily. You'll see that that process will change on each and every, every, everything. But you weren't here when the Blackwood property was sold to Danix.
Right, right.
That would have been an ideal time for you, as a person who had a concern about it, to speak up. And then those things could have been worked through.
I'm not, I'm not against the development, I'm against the tracking.
Right. I understand. Well, that's the thing, that's one of the, the performance-based zoning could, could help address, provided it's done right. And anytime you change your zone, you're going to be tweaking it from now on.
I just don't want to see the taxpayers have to go back later on and, and put, you know-
You're exactly right.
Spend money to, for this when the developers, in my opinion, the developers should pay for it.
And that's what, that's what that type of zone that I mentioned, right, does. It puts the burden on the developer. The end user, the landowner, whoever buys the lots, they're going to pay for it, one way or the other. But it takes the city away from being the person that has the funding.
Right.
That's, that's the beauty part of performance-based zoning. It's controversial, but it's also beneficial. Developers don't like it. That's plain and simple. They don't like it.
They're the ones making the money.
Well, they're the, exactly. So-
I will, I will say, I feel like in some ways I'm in the same boat as you, because I'm fairly new as well. And it's, it's really been humbling to come in and learn from all of you who do this day in and day out. And I've asked myself a lot, well, is this a stupid question I'm about to ask? But I feel as a resident, I, I would want to know. And, and I've had a lot of people come back to me and say, ask your questions, even if we've made these recommendations, ask them, because that's what we're here to be a voice for. And, you know, today was really a good time for you to bring up that zoning and for David to chime in and say, you know, do, do a working session if, if you want to and, and figure out how we can be more impactful moving forward.
I would say that's definitely one of the areas where commissioners have a lot of input, is when we do things like change the zoning ordinance or amend the zoning ordinance, if there are things that you would like to see in that ordinance, by letting staff know. I mean, every city has an ordinance somewhere, they're all available online, and some are better than others.
Well, we're probably looking at realistically 6,000 new homes that have been approved to come, somewhere along the line. We need to figure out a way to throttle that back now. Growth is good, but too much growth will make a man move.
It's kind of one of my curiosity questions. When you look at surrounding cities and their growth, are we in line with that or are we playing catch-up? Because it seems like we're trying to get it done now.
I mean, I think we're a little behind what some cities have done, but I wouldn't necessarily say we're playing catch-up. I mean, that's kind of a, it depends on who you ask kind of question.
A lot of things just coming down the pipe so fast.
Mr. Townsend, we put things into place, such as the system development charges. Those, those allow us to, as we grow, the city gets funds to grow. And so when we can ask the developers to do or do improvements, we do. But we can't catch it off. Like Mr. Gregg said, there's 6,000 houses, you know? It's impacting a little here, it's impacting a little here, here and here, but it impacts the central core of what we do. So there are going to be some roads, maybe Main Street, maybe Blackwood, that are going to have to be improved 10, 15, 20 years out as more and more people get into Springfield, more vehicles, go to Travis Price Park on a daily basis. You know, and we, we like to think we're pretty good at kind of projecting where all that is, but, you know, it's fluid. And the next group in is going to be who's going to help the next planning commission go, okay, we need to be looking here. And y'all will help the next, that planning commission will help the next board of mayor and alderman. So, yeah, we, we're looking ahead, but we do, you know, we do need to look ahead more. We need to address these issues in the zoning ordinance so that Springfield grows smart and at a nice steady pace, that we don't wind up like other places. There, there's a place I just read about in Texas that's just right outside of Houston that has had like 3,000 homes built in the last three years. And they're trying to play catch-up. And their, their main thoroughfares are way undersized. And so, so, yeah, you know, it's something to think about. And y'all keep asking, y'all keep going, hey, we need, because, and, and each and every one of you represents a ward. Talk to your alderman, let them know what you're hearing here, let them know what you're thinking, so that they are aware that, yeah, we got to start doing some things so that they're not caught off guard when y'all come to them and go, hey, we want to revamp the whole zoning ordinance. They need, you know, so, yeah, have those discussions, have those heartfelt discussions with the people that appoint you. They need to know.
Well, I think that's a kind of what we are all after. We want growth, but we want to get it right the first time, you know?
Responsible growth, yes.
That's why we're called a planning commission.
Yeah.
Well, are we planning to bring any type of entertainment of any kind into this area? Any type of venues where we don't have a theater? You know, I think about this so often.
We got a drive-in company.
Where?
Well, 431.
Okay, a drive-in.
So the city-
When I was young, I didn't have a drive-in.
I thought your mama wouldn't let you go.
Well, I did that, too, but I-
The kids have nothing to do. I mean, the kids have nothing to do.
Right. And on the summer programs, we, I think that we have here, it's what, at the Y?
Yes, ma'am. So, you know, does the city have a recruiter for those types of things? No. That, that, so, and we're not poised to recruit entertainment venues. So, you know, we don't have an entertainment development board, we have an industrial development board.
Okay, we have an industrial development.
Yeah.
But we're talking also about growth. And you got to have, I think, and this is my opinion, and we know everybody has one, and to offer, you know, to, we talk about our schools- And to offer, you know, to, we talk about our schools, what we offer in our schools. We talk about, you know, we don't have a bowling alley, we don't have a skating rink, we don't have these things. You have a skate park, sure. But just inside things that we could, would have to offer, does that come into that? I know you said, we don't have an entertainment committee.
Right.
And I understand that.
We don't, we don't have anything that recruits that way. The other side of that is, 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 you know, if we have those things, we have to support them. The reason we don't have a bowling alley is because people quit going to the bowling alley. The reason we don't have a skating rink is because people quit going to the skating rink. The reason we don't have a movie theater is because people quit going to the movie theater. So, you know, we farm that out to other communities and we suffered the loss for it.
And, you know, maybe this would be a good time to interject that it would be nice to see that comprehensive growth plan and what all is a part of that because it sounds like some of our concerns here would have been, would have been identified there and proposed there, right?
You should have it, if not, we can get you a copy.
No, I have access to it.
And, you know, I actually have physical copies for each of you. They're upstairs in there.
Well, there you go, yeah.
I thought I was bringing everything down tonight. Elements of those sorts of things are definitely in the comprehensive growth plan. But like Mr. Brewer was saying, the city's not a developer.
Yes.
So, and the other side of that is typically those sorts of venues don't come until you have the rooftops.
Yeah.
And it's, it's a which one comes first? We want them, but we also know what, you, you need the houses. And with the houses comes the traffic. So it's all collective and everybody probably recognizes that they would like all of those things. But there is a reason they weren't sustainable in the past. But doesn't mean they won't happen, yeah.
That's right.
Does the city still have a retail recruiting company?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? Well, I mean, we're getting off, we're getting way off in the weeds.
Yeah, we've been going.